Right. I'm gonna call the meeting. To order. It's seven thirty-one. In attendance, uh, online is, uh, is, uh, Andrea Lombard, uh, Brad Yurks. Uh, we have several guests, Mary Daly, and we have several guests and Dennis Maluso just signed in. Um, here, uh, is, is Corey, uh, Robert, uh, Brian, Dimitri, and obviously myself. Uh, let me see. One. Two. Three. Five, six, seven. Um, and I will, uh, have Brian sworn in as a full voting member. Um, because we don't have nine people. You're a quorum, but you can vote this on these items. First order of business approval of minutes of October twenty twenty-five. Does anyone have any uh, corrections, uh, clarifications or comments?
No.
Not hearing any, uh? Hi Jim.
Steve.
But the chair has invited Jim Lampos as a, uh, uh, a guest in the meeting tonight. As a pres- also a presenter, or, or at least someone that can weigh in on certain items that keeps a lot of time into. Not hearing any, uh, uh, can I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
No, I have a first, first. Uh, Corey's second by Dimitri. Uh, Brad Yurks, I. Yeah, yeah, you can read third. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, second on the agenda is, uh, budget update and expenses, and I'll hand that over to Andrea.
Hi, everyone. So, uh, for the treasurer's report this month, um, we have good news. So, our current budget, uh, operating budget for the year is ninety-one thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. We've only expensed about one point two percent of that. And, uh, it's been in clerical, so right now our remaining balance is ninety thousand forty-three dollars. We had encumbered, um, our Carmody software, uh, which should be paid out this month, and it's two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So, um, that's the budget update. I do have one follow-up, um, and it's, uh, it's gonna be a short report, but it took a long time to compile. Um, I looked at the Freedom of Information, um, for the Town of Old Line Detailed Statement of Accounts and Expenditures. That includes the itemized appropriation, expenditure, and encumbrance transactions. And went by that from twenty fourteen to current, and looked at all the legal expenses. So, that was twenty fourteen, uh, fiscal year, all the way to where we are now in twenty twenty-five. And there was a clear cut point. So, from twenty fourteen to current, we have spent one hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars in legal fees. Eighty-two percent of those legal fees were between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty. And if you remember back in twenty fourteen, at every meeting, we had an attorney present. And the legal fees were much, um, much more robust. But we've been pretty good stewards from the, um, twenty twenty-one to current, with some years being able to carry forward the money so that we actually had no, uh, minimal expenses. So, from the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to current, we are averaging between three and seven point five percent of that total amount on legal fees. So, I, I wanted to stress that. I also have been meeting with, um, our state contact, Lee Rogers, to review the Clean Water Fund, uh, the design phase, the planning phase, and the upcoming construction loan phase. And I wanna remind you that if we did use that, that loan for, uh, the attorney, there is no grant portion. So, it would be a hundred percent at two percent for a minimum of ten years of interest. So, since we're caught up with legal fees to date, and we're budget, and we're within budget, or below budget, um, like this year, we had a surplus. Um, it would be prudent for us not to, um, use the Clean Water Funds for this, um, at this point. Martha may, uh, consider using that forward. But right now, um, we've been really excellent stewards of, of this money, I believe. Any questions?
Just a quick question, this is Mary, can you hear me?
Sure, Mary, I can hear you.
Thank you. So, just in conclusion, you're saying of the one hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and eighty-nine spent in legal, none of that will be billed to, uh, the Soundview residents for this project, is that correct?
I didn't say that, Mary. Um, I said that of the money that I've just, um, FOI'd, that, uh, that was FOI'd. This all came out of our existing budget. So, there, it's all been paid, and there's no remaining balance right now. So, there's nothing, there's nothing to be paid, so there's nothing to be billed.
Thank you, so you're saying there's nothing that needs to be bought, uh, financed at two percent that won't be reimbursable under Clean Water Funds or, uh, DEEP. But what portion, what number of the one seventy-five four eighty-nine will be charged back to the Soundview project?
Does that, what I just said, Mary?
Andrea, let me answer that, please. Let me answer that.
Sure, sure, sure.
Currently, there are no plans to, to request reimbursement of CWF funds for expenditures that have been paid out of the, uh, general fund. So, as of tonight, none would be charged to customers of Soundview. Um, that could change if the WPCA wants to try to get CWF funding and reimburse the town, or the town requests reimbursement and forces the WPCA to, uh, request funding through CWF funds. But as of right now, there's no intention of doing any of that. It's a general fund, the money's been spent over the years, no one's requested reimbursement, and so it's a dead issue, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Steve, you said that really well. I mean, there is an option to seek, uh, Clean Water Funding at two percent. And then, yes, Mary would be correct, that that would go back to the users. But that's nothing that we have considered, it's not our decision to make. We, you know, have to go through Martha and the town. But at this point, we're zero balance.
Okay, thank you very much, and, and I hope that all of that gets, um, captured in the minutes going forward, thank you.
It should, it was reported.
Thank you.
Yep, you're very welcome. I have to, um, sign off, I, I did wanna listen in to your report, Steve, but I'm gonna just kinda quietly drift off once that's done.
Sure, than- thank you, Andrea. Um, I would like to, to, to note that, uh, Randy Nixon, uh, uh, full member, and John Flick, uh, uh, an alternate member, uh, arrived at seven thirty-six. Randy is, uh, a voting member, may vote. Um, and John, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six. And John, elsewhere, you is a voting member. So, you may vote tonight. John?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't know. I heard you.
All right.
And you already sworn in Brian, right, correct?
Yes.
Earlier, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Chairman's Report, uh, CSA status. Um, I'm gonna ask everyone to give a vote, uh, to, to approve the CSA as, as written, I forwarded it earlier today. Uh, Mike Petello has made revisions to the funding part, um, uh, minor revision, revisions that don't really affect the, the import of the, uh, document itself. Uh, we still have twenty-nine point seven percent. It's just, he wanted to be as accurate as possible as far as, uh, capturing how the state's going to fund the project. And we'll be voting, uh, to, to, to authorize signing the CSA, uh, under new business. Um, project status, uh, projects are moving forward. Uh, Old Colony has signed a, I guess, like, a letter of intent, and has gone out for requests to, to, uh, DEEP to, uh, allow award. Uh, Miami Beach had a referendum or a vote on, on funding, uh, their project on Saturday. Uh, the results are a little confusing, um. I don't think they, they structured it correctly, but, uh, ba- basically, they had a vote of sewers and drainage versus no sewers, sewers only versus no sewers, and then no sewers. And the combined sewers with no drainage and sewers with drainage outnumbered no sewers. But now they're trying to get an opinion on exactly what, what want. Uh, because no sewers beat out those other two individually. So, uh, they're looking for some clarification.
Humans do disagree, but not collectively.
Collectively, sewers beat out no sewers.
Yeah.
All right, but individually, they did not.
Okay, got it, so, so that's what I was.
So, that's, that's, uh, that's.
I just wanna be.
That's what they're, yes. Um, what's their timeline for figuring out that maze? Well, well, uh, their timeline has passed. Uh, contracts are supposed to be signed by the three beach associations, uh, yesterday. Yeah, um, I don't believe the contractors have drawn their, their extensions, but, uh, it's coming up quick. Um, our contractor has, uh, has, uh, extended his bid to the end of, end of, uh, this year, December thirty-first. Um, I've asked for credits on items that, uh, we weren't using. We got an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar credit for not using double-wall pipe. Uh, it was kinda offset, uh, by a four-hundred-thousand-dollar increase in, uh, inflation, which I wrote back to the engineer and said they're, they're figuring inflation incorrectly. He's figuring inflation on a per linear foot price of the bid. So, if they bid two-hundred-and-fifty, he added another thirty-five dollars for inflation. But it's just inflation on the pipe, um, it's not inflation on overhead, it's not inflation on, on everything else. It's inflation on pipe and probably stone, um, but there is no, so I said, he has to go back, uh, to when the, the project could have been awarded, which was, uh, I think in May. Um, you know, to provide pricing for all the materials he wants an increase in. And then we'll do our research and find out how much that is, and that's who he gets. He doesn't, he doesn't get eight percent of a bid item, he gets eight percent of the cost of what's causing the increase in pricing. Uh, and that's how it is with the beach associations in Fussin' O'Neill. So, uh, I, I would expect, right, right now, around about eight-point-one million for the contract. I would expect it to go down, uh, another, uh, below eight hu- eight, eight million before we're done, uh, with all the changes. Uh, DEEP funding, uh, DEEP funding is still in place right now, they're, they're working on, uh, uh, they, they met with our bonding, our bond council, uh, I was on a meeting, uh, Monday with them, uh, to determine exactly how to write it up, uh, to determine how, how to write it up. And they've also given us numbers for, um, numbers that they are paring as far as project cost. So, that would be, uh, and we'll go over those, um, we'll go over those when, when we vote for, for, uh, to increase the referendum. Um, that's about it, as far as my reports concerned, um, does anyone have any questions? Okay, not hearing any, we'll go to new business, and, uh, the new business, first item is this question.
Steve, I'm sorry, can you repeat the referendum status? Is there a date?
Uh, I can, I, I can, uh, provide a status when we, when we talk about referendum and old business.
Oh, I have it in as your report. Sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay.
It's in both, but, uh, yeah, um, let me discuss that, uh, in, 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 before the vote. I forget, it's a little more, it's more discussion. Um, new business is discussion of approving and authorizing signature of the revised CSA, subject to minor changes. Um, so we, we, we have a final, uh, we have a final CSA. Um, there is an appendix that's concerning, uh, the properties that we're going to tie into Old Colony and Miami Beach, and how to calculate what is a fair, uh, price for that. Um, we're working on it, uh, I've sent out, well, Fussin' O'Neill has done some of the, some of the calculations. I believe they viewed the, the concept incorrectly. I gave them my corrections, which would amount to approximately, uh, fifty thousand dollars for the seven homes. Um, and my calculation is basically the amount, the full amount of pipe being used in, in Old Colony, uh, which would be, uh, well, the, the full amount of pipe that we're using, which is about nineteen hundred and fifty-six feet over the entire pipe of, of Old Colony, which is about seventy-four hundred and fifty. Uh, you divide that, that's twenty-six percent of the pipe. And then, uh, you divide their cost of construction less their drainage, and come out to about twenty-seven thousand dollars, uh, per EDU. And I believe we should owe twenty-six percent of their EDU to tie in. So, that would be about seven thousand dollars, seven thousand and change. Um, probably look it up here. Uh, and that would be what we would pay. I think it's fair, we're an outside entity. The way Fussin' O'Neill figured it, it's basically adding us into their EDU total. And that's not, we're, we're not doing that. Um, the, the way I had figured it is, is, I believe, correct and fair. We're using twenty-six percent of their pipe, we should pay for twenty-six percent of their, uh, of the pipe, uh, of which we're using. Um, so, we'll find out, uh, if they agree.
Installed cost, right?
Installed cost.
Yeah.
And it's twenty-six percent, uh, of the, you know, of the entire cost of that pipe. It's not just lining them, it's, it's twenty-six percent of contract price, but it's still just twenty-six percent. And then I s- apply it to the EDU. So, we should owe twenty-six percent of the, of their EDU. Um, uh, the numbers that I had, that I sent to Fussin' O'Neill for review, uh, is twenty-six percent. Uh, their EDU price is twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Twenty-six percent of that is seventy-seven hundred nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. You multiply that by seven, it's fifty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, that would be a cost that we would pay to Old Colony as a tie-in fee, just like we do with East Line or New London. And, uh, this is based on the fact that we're tying into East Line's system, but they're not charging us the cost of the whole system, they're just charging us for the transmission infrastructure that we're using. They're not going up to, uh, they're, they're not charging us for, for the cost of their whole system. They're charging us for the cost of the transmission infrastructure. So, um, anyway, uh, so that's, uh, basically, the, the only, uh, item that, that is under dispute right now. Uh, we've met continuously for six months. Uh, the beach associations, uh, the Town of, uh, the Town of Old Line WPCA, and the Town, uh, of Old Line being represented by Jim Lampos has, uh, hammered out all the wording, uh, except for that one area. But, uh, I, at this point, I would like to, 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 uh, recognize Jim Lampos, who's been nice enough to attend this meeting to discuss, uh, the CSA changes that, uh, he fought and, and got in to help better represent the town. So, Jim?
Thank you, Steve. Um, yeah, so this process in negotiating the CSA, uh, we worked with, uh, the four parties, Old Colony, Old Lime Shore is Miami Beach, and the town. Uh, Steve and I representing the town, Scott, uh, Bellinger at Miami Beach, uh, Frank Nowey, uh, Doug Whalen in Old Colony, along with their attorney, uh, Humes and Sharkey, and, uh, Jerry, uh, Vander, well, I forgot his, get his last name. Uh, Jerry and, uh, Old Lime Shores, and, um, Jay Moynihan in Old Lime Shores. And, uh, it, it was a long process. We went into this process, or I went into it, with, uh, three revisions that we wanted to see that would make the process more fair for Soundview. Um, there were a lot of objections raised to the initial EDU calculation that is baked into the New London IMA agreement, um, and exists as Exhibit B in this agreement. Uh, so, one of the major things that we were able to achieve is an Exhibit C, uh, which indicates that our operations and maintenance fees will be based on flow, or what we actually use, rather than our EDU calculation. That'll begin at year three, after the end of two years. The reason being, we won't have a good idea of what flow is until that point. Uh, but in, at the end of two years, uh, the EDUs essentially will go away. And our charges at that point for operations and maintenance, uh, to New London and to the system in general will be based on our water use. So, it'll be based on what we actually use. Uh, another thing that we talked about that has been included, uh, is expansion of the system. If the system is expanded to anywhere else, Four Mile River, Hawks Nest, or what have you, that expansion will have to be self-funding. We won't be responsible for paying for that expansion. We won't pay a share of that expansion, since we've paid a hundred percent of this project. Um, and thirdly, we have, uh, the Soundview representative is something that we thought was very important. Uh, so, the construction committee, uh, includes a representative who lives in Soundview. And that person will be representing the town, uh, on the construction committee. So, specifically, uh, uh, Section two-point-one-C talks about the Soundview representative. Uh, three-point-one-A talks about cost, uh, operations and maintenance being based on flow after year two. And Section five, um, the expand, uh, speaks to the expansion, or potential expansion of the system, what those conditions would be. So, um, I feel pretty good that we got what we were looking for, uh, going into this. And it wa- it wasn't easy, but, uh, you know, everyone came together on it. Um, one thing that is outstanding, as Steve mentioned, is two-point-one-A, Section seven, uh, concerning the cost share, or the, uh, cost of the seven properties in Area B tying into Old Colony, and two properties in Miami tying into, uh, two properties in Area B tying into Miami. Um, this was an issue that came up at the very last CSA meeting, it was raised by Frank Nowey at Old Colony. Um, and sort of came out of nowhere for me, uh, and we do not have agreement on that particular item. So, that will be Exhibit E, uh, attached to this CSA. And that remains outstanding, Steve just spoke to that. Um, and I just wanna make sure, Steve, that when we're talking about the EDU share of Old Colony, that we're only talking about the internal infrastructure, since those properties are already paying their fair share of the shared infrastructure. So, uh, anyway, I, I, I do not, I, I'm not ready to give an opinion on that, because I haven't seen that language. Uh, I've, have not been part of that negotiation, it came up briefly in one of our meetings. Uh, but we have not been negotiating that, and that is still being worked on. Uh, otherwise, um, personally, I'm ready to sign off on this CSA on all terms and, um, and sections, uh, apart from this Area B. Uh, I think we have a good agreement. Whether we agree with sewers or not, I think the cost-sharing agreement is fair, um, between the town and the beaches.
Thank, thank you, Jim. John?
Jim, you, you made it, you, you made it kind of, um, based on outflow, but you did bring up water usage.
Right.
Water usage.
So, so typically, uh, the way, right, the way, uh, there's two ways you could, uh, measure u- usage, and one of them would be to have meters at the pump station, meters coming out each party. Uh, and that was determined to be, uh, a very expensive option, and, uh, an option with high maintenance. The other way, you could do it, and I can speak to Grahan Utilities, does it this way. Um, you measure water use. Um, and that would be, you know, assuming that almost all of your water goes down the drain into the sewer system. Uh, so, that would be an indication of your use of the system. So, we would be using Connecticut Water meter data. And, uh, for the few homes that are on wells, we would be using, uh, meters on those wells to determine what the use of each, uh, each party is.
And there, there is a flow meter leading the station that will measure.
So, I just, so people are okay with that, because, again, if, if you, if, again, being a homeowner, I've been through this. I had a separate unit set up, because I, I had a garden. And it's, it didn't go down the sewer, it went into the, in, out into the garden. That's, I mean, so, I'm just saying, people have gotta understand that it's, it's water usage, or water intake is whatever they could bring, bring, coming in, they're gonna, they're gonna get, is, is part of the usage. Whether it's going down and out into the garden, or it's going down into a sewer.
Right, I mean, there's, and, and some houses will actually have wells that would not be attached to the house.
Okay.
Some houses have.
Right, okay.
Simply for wiring lawns.
Um, just a clarification, just a clarification, just a clarification, the first two years are based on our EDU percentage. So, the first two years will be twenty-nine point seven percent. Now, the other thing you have to realize is when we talk about flow and, and, uh, metering, it's a cumulative, we're adding up a cumulative value to determine our percentage within. value to determine our percentage within the four W P Cs. We're not, the each W P C A can bill their customers as they deem fit. But if the bill to New London is five hundred thousand dollars, they'll have to pay a percentage based on flow of that five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay? All right, go ahead, Mary, please.
Okay, thank you, uh, this is more for Jim, if you don't mind. When you say that it's based on flow after two years, does that mean that there's an opportunity to also reduce the contractual fees, the connection fees, since they're based on a certain flow, which we know we're never going to exceed, it's like five times what Connecticut Water says we use today? So will there be also a reduction in the contractual fees? That that would be my first question, and second, if people, as you say, as John also pointed out, not all water will go down the sewer. Some water is used outside for irrigation or washing a boat or whatever. Um, so if people choose, even if they have Connecticut Water, to install at their own cost a sewer meter, will that be applicable, will that be used instead of Connecticut Water? And thirdly, for the sewer wa- uh, sewage meters, I think at one point, we decided and had it had been voted on that those meters for wells would be included in the cost of the um, E D Us in the overall project, that it wouldn't be billed or uh, be the responsibility of the homeowner. So, do we have an estimate of what that sewer meter would cost and how it's going to be maintained and read?
Uh, m- most of the meters will be Connecticut Water meters that are existing currently on people's properties. And as you correctly point out, some properties have um, wells, and so a meter will have to be installed in that well. Uh, that's not something that's addressed specifically in this C S A. I think that's something that's decided within the W P C A, the Old Lime W P C A, and how that's going to be handled.
Yeah, we we've already, we've already discussed that, and it have included that as a construction cost uh, for the W P C A, not the homeowner.
Um, and in terms of a uh, sewer meter, uh, again, that's that's something, you know, I'm not sure how that would work uh, in terms of comparing apples to apples with different houses, people could, you know, we could really start splitting hairs on, you know, uh, washing the car versus what goes down the drain. I know that a lot of utilities do use water flow. Uh, and as I said, you know, the where I am right now, in Grotten, my restaurant, in my parents' house, it's your sewer bill is triggered by your water use, basically. So we don't have anything specifically in the C S A uh, about that.
As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, we're we're locked in to inflow, metering inflow. Because really, you can't su- you can't meter sewer, you can't meter.
It's almost impossible, because it's not under pressure, and so it's an open pipe flow, and it's like almost, and especially a really small amount coming out of a house, you just can't do it, not accurately.
Now, what I, what I have a feeling will ha- what I have a feeling what will happen is that uh, total outflow, let's say, is a million gallons. And uh, I'm s- I'm sorry, total outflow is nine hundred thousand gallons, and total inflow uh, meaning what people meter is a million gallons. I have a feeling that, uh, you know, that hundred thousand gallons isn't isn't being used, and so uh, I have a feeling that once you get that percentage, you would bill everyone ninety percent of what their, what their inflow is. Um, and split it between everyone, so that the percentage is ninety percent, but uh, you know, some people may water their garden every day, and they they will end up contributing a little more than someone that doesn't, but uh, that's just the way it is, there's there's no other way of metering.
Well, because you are going to have to meter some of them that do, that are on wells, so you will be.
Yeah, we're gonna meter the well. Mary, we're going to meter the well. There'll be a meter on the well that will measure, that will measure inflow.
And and to. Yeah, to 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 address another question you raised, Mary, um, share of the contractual amount. Um, the initial connection charges to New London and East Lime are a fixed charge, and they've already been negotiated in that I M A, and I think that we're stuck with paying um, I mean, the town has its own, its own calculation, that's in that I M A contract for what it owes, so that's fixed, but um, after year two, when we have good data on flow, uh, the rest of it will be based on what's actually used, so the uh, charges coming out of New London are triggered by uh, what is actually flowing out of Old Lime in the aggregate. Um, and so our share would be based on wh- what our um percentage is of that total flow, based on measured flow in our community. Uh, so the aggregate amount of water being used in Soundview will be what determines the charges coming out of New London and East Lime, both in terms of use charges and in terms of shares of capital expense, et cetera, et cetera, because all of that is based on on flow, so all of this is gonna, the E D Us will go away with the exception of um, this initial construction, um, that is set, as we know, and uh, the contractual uh, connection charges to New London and East Lime, since those are set in the I M A. Uh, but the rest of it is based on on flow, so um, in New London, uh, the charges out of New London are triggered by uh, what's actually coming out of Old Lime, and so those charges will be apportioned based on what each community actually uses and not what the E D U charges uh, divided up as now.
Thank you. I just, just one more comment, um, since you brought up the new addition and compensation to Old Colony um, for sharing pipes. If I recall correctly, the reason why we shared pipes to begin with or designed was that there were, there were for the um, nine properties that would have required grinder pumps, you would have had to dig a little deeper in order to keep the uh, Soundview pipe separate, and it wasn't really stimulated to share pipes because of those properties as much as a few properties in Miami Beach who couldn't access their pipes. Do you recall that, Steve, because it was your statement at that time, it was in, I think it was okay, it was in twenty twenty-three, I can go back through the
I think you, I think you have, I think you have some pipe mixed up.
Really?
But, but uh, the pipe.
The trunk pipe?
No. We're not, I mean, I was, I think back then, I'm not now, but uh, back then, uh, we're we're sharing, we are sharing uh, a a a trunk line with Miami Beach at the end of uh, Pond, Pond Street, Pond, whatever, Pond View, Pond Street, Pond Road.
Pond Road.
Um, there's, there's, I don't know, three hundred feet or four hundred feet that we would have had parallel lines to. Um, and we decided to combine those uh, into one, um, which will share the cost fifty fifty with Miami Beach. It would be crazy for both of us to put the same line in, but that's not what these are concerned. These are concerning uh, areas where grinder pumps would have to be installed, because in order to, when you say, oh, there's a little elevation difference, there is a little elevation difference at the far end. It would have been about a foot to a foot and a half, but that would have meant that all of our pipe would have had to have been laid uh, a foot to a foot and a half deeper, which gets it into uh, the ten-foot area of depth, which is a kind of a a kind of delineator in the business where uh, the cost to put an eight-foot pipe in, eight-foot deep pipe in versus a ten-foot be, may may go up fifty dollars, uh, sixty dollars a foot. Um, so it was deemed important to keep us as shallow as possible. That's why those uh, uh, homes were gonna have grinder pumps. Um, we don't have to adjust our s- our design system at all. Uh, and we can tie them into Old Colony, because they're slightly deeper. Um, and Miami Beach, because they are deeper than we are. Um, so that's why these these nine homes are being considered, or seven homes. It it removed nine grinder pumps, the infrastructure for the nine grinder pumps, the maintenance on nine grinder pumps for years, so it it's a, you know, I I think the fifty-three thousand dollars and whatever would owe Miami Beach uh, for the two is certainly uh, a a good investment for Old Line. And it, you know, it doesn't affect Old Colony at all, Old Colony's gonna build their system the way it is anyway, so they just get a little offset on their costs.
Okay, uh, thank you, I was just, uh, I thought I remember you saying that was more to uh, Miami Beach couldn't access their pipes, there was a couple of homes over there, but I'll go back and look at that. I've lost my thought.
Let me just, let me just say this.
Yes, Randy?
I I remember the discussion, and the fact is, at the end of the day, over time, it saves not only the end users money, it also saves the project money all the time.
The fifty-six thousand dollars increase, is that?
Fifty-three.
Whatever, whatever, if you're proposing that to be charged to the project as a whole?
Yes.
Or um, or to those particular properties?
Project as a whole, it's project expense. That's what I suppose.
My last question on that is, since the New London and East Lime agreements stipulate a percentage, this does increase the percentage of usage and maintenance that would be billable to Soundview? Would those contracts therefore have to be rewritten, because they are very specific in their costs and percentages in both of those contracts?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Jimmy, want to weigh in on that?
So, the what, you know, a- and again, this this is the one part of the C S A that was last minute, um, and I was not involved in that, um, that was I believe it was between you, uh, Steve, and uh, Frank Noe and Steve Humes, if I'm not mistaken, um, so.
That conversation was, yeah.
Conversation, yeah. Um, my impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that this is a one-time charge of fifty-three thousand dollars that covers all seven homes and will be divided among, essentially be added to Soundview's cost. Operations and maintenance would continue. The fees would continue to be under Soundview.
Correct.
So this is a one-time hit, basically. And 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 again, until I see the numbers, and we talked about, Steve, getting numbers of what grinder pumps would have cost, we have comparables in there. Uh, and we can make, you know, appropriate decision, but I haven't seen the language yet, so I'm holding off on rendering an opinion on that.
All right, so uh, does anyone else have any comments? All right, so if if someone could could uh, provide a motion to uh, approve authorizing signature of the C S A subject to minor changes, uh, and we could put in there, and approval of the town of Old Line. If we could have a motion that that would reflect that, uh, and second, and we could vote on whether.
I will make a motion.
Okay, so Dimitri, you're making a motion to authorize uh, the chair to sign the revised C S A subject to minor changes and with approval of the town of Old Line?
Yes.
Okay, is it a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Randy, it's a seconds, of course, we should have discussion now, but we never do that.
I can ask a question.
Sure.
Is it the chair that's gonna sign it, and not the selectman?
The chair will sign it for the town of Old Lime W P C A. The first select will sign it for the town of Old Lime. So uh, any other questions or comments?
I just have to ask, since we just received the revisions today, how many here have actually had an opportunity to read the thirty-two pages that we received this afternoon, because I certainly haven't, I was at work and have family commitments tonight, so I have not had a chance to read the cautionary agreement that you're asking to approve, has everyone else read it? I'd like to know who on the W P C A has had time today to read through the the C S A.
I see three hands, Corey, John, Randy, Dimitri. I have, um, and uh, you know, I want, I mean, there there were revisions that were made on this this morning. Uh, you know, it's a working document, they're minor revisions, but they're they, I had to, I had to certainly at least include Mike Patello's uh, uh, comments and changes to to the C S A, because it it actually does change some of the funding mechanisms. Uh, but they're not, they they don't affect our bottom line, it just affects the document.
There were not significant changes since the last iteration.
No, no, they're, it's all wording. I mean, obviously, important words for a lot of attorneys, but for us, when you read it, it's basically the same document, twenty-nine point seven percent.
I am very uncomfortable approving a document that I haven't had time to read or really the opportunity to read it since I worked all day, and I would feel you know, I think that everybody on this board should have that same consideration, I mean, you haven't read the document, you shouldn't be voting on it, but that's my opinion.
Well, it's, uh, most of the people in this room have voted, uh, raised their.
Did, what did?
I put my compliments to Jimmy and Steve.
More people said they read it.
Okay, so, uh, all right, well, that's your, thank you very much for your opinion, uh, are there any other comments? All right, um.
Peter, Peter, I mean, Dennis has his hand up.
I didn't see you, okay, yes, Dennis?
Okay, question, uh, this little addition, all of a sudden um, at the, at the bitter end of the C S A, Old Colony decides this is what they want to add in, all of a sudden. I'm I'm wondering why, what's the, what's the impetus for them to do it now that they didn't do it a year ago or a year and a half ago? Can you answer that?
Uh, I can't speak for Old Colony, uh, it was out there, um, we had discussed it uh, when when we were getting rid of grinder pumps, uh, but it was more of a uh, more of a we'll work something out then, uh, it wasn't what what Frank wants, that's for sure. I mean, we are saving money, and I'm not, I'm not denying that, Old Col- uh, old, old line is saving money, uh, not putting grinder pumps. But even if we're saving money, I don't believe we should be giving all those savings to Frank or to Old Colony as 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 a tie-in fee. The tie-in fee that I believe is fair, um, is what I presented uh, today to to Fosse O'Neill and Old Colony and the rest of the beach associations. And uh, I believe that's a fair tie-in fee, it's based basically on what East Lime has done for us, so uh, you know, it's gonna be reviewed, uh, and uh, they'll either accept it or they won't, I mean.
I just want to echo Mary's thought, you know, um, I got this at quarter after six. And I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Sent out this afternoon.
Well, yeah, but you know, um, unle- unless it was in uh, uh, a text form, I have to go, I have to go through my emails to find it. So that's when I found it, and I I think we're just not doing it justice just to get uh, the C S A um, uh, signed. If if Jim, Jim had, if Jim has any reservations, I have, I have just as many reservations.
Jim doesn't have any reservations. Jim doesn't have any reservations.
Over, over the addition?
Jim doesn't have any reservations. Jim does not have any reservations over the document. He, he's.
Over the CSA. Over the CSA.
Over the CSA.
The, the new, the new addition, I haven't rendered an opinion on yet, cuz I haven't seen the language. Um, everything, with the exception of this new area B, Old Colony. Uh, situation, I, I, I'm signing off on personally. Um, that doesn't mean that everyone has to sign off on it. Obviously, everyone comes to their own conclusion. But my conclusion, with the exception of the area B situation, which is still up in the air. Um, uh, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the rest of the document.
And, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're not, if you're not, uh, that's why I structured or, or requested. This vote to be structured that way. If you're not comfortable with, uh, uh, Exhibit E. You won't be signed, or the town probably won't be signing the document. Is that correct?
Uh, it, I, I, I don't want to commit the town one way or another until we actually see the language.
Right.
And have the opportunity to comment.
As a WPCA, the way this, um, uh, vote is structured, we can't sign it unless the town signs.
Right, I, I would be, i- if, if, uh, Frank and Old Colony stick by their original. Uh, demand that these seven houses pay a full EDU. Uh, that would be a deal breaker for me personally, uh, cuz I think that's just unfair.
Well, it's a deal breaker, obviously it's a deal breaker for me.
Yeah. So, we'll see where it ends up.
Alright, so, uh, any other comments?
Just one last question. Steve, did you just receive this document today? Is that why we only got it?
I, I got, I got this document, uh, today from Mike Patello.
And the changes to the CSA, this Exhibit E or whatever, you just received that today?
No, I'm still working on Exhibit E with Fosse O'Neil in O-colony.
Okay, I'm just wondering, cuz, you know, I had asked you if there was some documents to send them. I had asked you earlier, like last week, to send them so we could review, but I just received it this afternoon as well.
I know that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Not hearing any. I'd like to call a vote. Um, all in favor of authorizing. Uh, the chairman's signature, uh, to the CSA after approval by, uh. Or in conjunction with approval by the town. Uh, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Alright.
Dennis is, unmute yourself, Dennis.
Dennis, Dennis, are you? Dennis, what did you say?
No.
No?
Okay.
And.
I'm still waiting through that you were kind enough to, for, for me to get a dr- of the, a copy of initial draft. So this coming so late today, I'm gonna have to vote no until I can fully digest all the, uh, information.
Okay. Uh, John, you're voting now, so one, two, three, four, five. Six. Six, six in favor. Uh, opposed are Mary, Brian, and Dennis.
Please name the six in favor. Thank you.
Six in favor, Corey, Rob, uh, Dimitri, Randy, John, Brad. And, is that it? One, excuse. I, I, I don't know unless there's a tie.
Yeah.
Um, so passing six to three. Um, thank you very much. Uh, this should be a little easier. Everyone hopefully received, uh, a meeting schedule for, uh, next. Next year, we have to have this in by December to town. Um, these are basically one day less than last year, except I believe, uh, November. Uh, November is the tenth, Veterans Day is the eleventh. There shouldn't be any interruption there. And I believe there was one other day that was a little earlier, uh, like a week earlier, but I forget. Um, they're basically the second Tuesday of every month, uh, seven thirty. Any discussion? Well, can we have a motion to accept this, uh, meeting calendar?
So moved.
There is a second?
Second.
Randy, Randy, uh. Randy was, uh, uh, proposed, uh, it was second by Corey first. Um, any discussion on this, uh, schedule? Not hearing any, uh, can I have, uh, uh, all the, uh, motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Alright, um, let's see. Old business, uh, there's an item here, it reminded me, uh, uh, about, about, um. Whether we need to vote on whether to include the New London and Eastline connection fees as a user fee. Or part of the assessment. And I, I, I just want to state a couple of reasons why we had originally said they were user fees. And then we can have discussion. Um. Well, actually, can I have a motion to place the New London and Eastline connection fees as a user fee? Rob, uh, Rob proposed the motion, a second?
I'll second it.
Randy seconded, so now discussion. So. I'll give you a little background. The connection fees are not reimbursable by CWF. You can't get twenty-five percent, you can't even get a loan. They will not lend money for those connection fees. Those connection fees are considered, uh, I forget what Carl said, cap- capital. Capital expenditure, I don't know what, what, but they're not subject to any type of funding by CWF. Uh, uh, it's, it's a fee that is paid by us. Um, it's, we have been granted a, basically a line of credit from Eastline in New London to pay this on a yearly basis. Financed at two percent by Eastline and two point sixty-five percent by New London. Because of those two things, and because the state doesn't really give guidance on whether they have to be in the assessment fee. Or in a user fee, we decided to put it into a user fee because. There's no, it, it's, it's paid on an as-you-go basis. Um, so if. If someone lives in their house for ten years and sells it, they pay ten years of, of that fee. Uh, and then the next person will pay whatever they, they, they do it up until twenty years. At what time, it gets renegotiated. There's always gonna be, it's not a tie-in fee, but there'll always be user fees to New London and Eastline. But it won't be a tie-in fee at that point. It'll just be based on, uh, treatment.
But, oh, so over time, after twenty years, the, the tie-in fee goes away?
The tie-in fee goes away.
Okay.
But there'll still be a component of user fees and, and other, you know, treatment fees and everything else. Alright, so that's, that's why we placed it as a user fee instead of an assessment. And just so everyone understands the difference between us and the beaches. A hundred percent of the beaches. Population will pay the assessment or the user. It doesn't really matter where they put that. It, it's going to be paid a hundred percent by their users. Um, and so the beaches said, I'll just throw it in the assessment. I don't care. It's easier. Plus, I believe, uh, they have, if you put it in the assessment, you have rights if they don't pay it. Such as foreclosure rights or whatever, cuz it's an assessment and not a user fee. Um. We decide not to go that way, but I just need to vote one way or the other. I think it should be user fee, but I'd like to hear from, uh, everyone on the board here.
Hey, I'll go if I can. This is Mary.
Sure.
First of all, there was never a vote, ever, to include the, the contraction fees to the user fees. We went through this like two months ago. And last month, we did vote unanimously, I think. To accept the accountant's figures, which includes the contractual fees in the EDO. We just voted on that last month. So there, you have those two. My third objection to not including them in the co- in the assessment fees is that the, as you said, these are. Payments due to Eastline and New London. When the first drop of sewage goes to New London, reaches New London. We may only have ten percent of our community hooked up at that time. But those connection fees will be due quarterly, the first quarter and after the first year. So where will the money come from to pay those fees if they're not part of the assessment? It may take ten years for some people to make their connection. And in the meantime, where will the money come to pay that, that person or that household's connection fees? So it doesn't make sense to me to call them user fees when you yourself just said that they're considered. Part of the capital expenditures. You just said that. So for me, no, they should be included, they should not be part of the user fees. They should be part of, as you just said. Considered part of the capital expenditure and rolled into the assessment. Thank you.
Is there any other comment?
Do, do those fees not also affect EDUs? And again, I'm still the good kid on the block, but I'm trying to digest this. That, that still affects the EDUs too, right? So would it not make more sense to put those costs? And make it part of, um. Yeah. Part of construction? I'm not a program boss, so, but, but again. Mary made a comment about the accountants report, about being part of the EDU. I think they said we would, it, you can calculate it per EDU. It's not, it's footnoted as a per EDU. It's not in the construction costs. Remember, what, what, what they, what, what we said was, there's a construction cost. And then there's these other fees, and we're gonna say they're per you EDU, but they're not part of the construction. We said we're gonna add all these things up so we can get apples to apples. But wh- whether they're construction or usage is very different. We said, but we said that we would line them all up so we could see that. So it's, it doesn't, it, we didn't say they're gonna be part of the construction. We're gonna say this, we're, when we talk about apples to apples. So someone could see what they're, it's gonna cost them, we would, we would, we would see that.
We included all the costs.
Yes, we, we, there, there are costs. We didn't, we didn't say it's gonna be in this bucket or that bucket.
John, we said we would accept the accountant's numbers and her number was twenty-eight oh five.
No, 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 we, we said we took, no, we, we, we said the, it, it comes. Reference of what we were included as, we didn't say it's part of construction. We said, when we present this, it's gonna be this, 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 and this. I think there were four categories.
To be, to be, to be clear, Mary, to be clear, the construction costs were only the construction costs. They're the contract values added up, divided by two seventy, and then financed at two percent. That was all of the construction costs that the accountant.
It was nineteen fifty plus, two fifty plus, one fifty plus another, there were four.
Sixty-four.
There were four things.
The construction costs also include the engineering, the interest, etc., right? But you, I, I mean, I thought the EDU was supposed to be the capital expenditure costs, is that correct? So it's not just the bid cost, it's everything related to construction. Anything related to the capital expenditure for this project, is that correct?
No.
No, like you just said, that four of those things were user costs. Jim, please, tie in, cuz this ties in, the accountant said it ties into your numbers. And you and Steve agreed on the numbers and ended up at, I don't know, twenty-two dol- twenty-two hundred dollars per EDU. But it, part of it was construction, part of it was this, part of it was that.
We agreed to twenty, we agreed last year, last, last month at twenty-eight oh five.
Right.
For total, total cost per EDU. Total cost per EDU. So that, that, that was. Based on four components, as John says. It was construction cost. And construction costs, Mary, include the engineering cost, it includes the inspection cost, it includes, those are construction costs. Anything associated with, cuz they include the design fees.
Right.
After that, there came user fees. And after that, there came tie-in fees.
Right.
And then, I forgot what the third one was, fourth one.
I think it was the line cost then.
But, uh, I'll give you was internal, uh, but, but those, those, so we voted that those numbers seemed reasonable. They came close to Jim's, they came close to mine, but we didn't categorize those numbers as being in construction. We just said those costs added up would be the cost per EDU.
You say construction, I said the capital expenditures, but, and anyway, won't that change now since? We do know now that the forced main and bioxide, the rainmaker backed out. Maybe in June, we don't know when, but we do know they backed out and Baltasar is now the sole bidder on. The forced main and bioxide for an additional one point two million. Don't all these numbers have changed?
Yeah, of course, of course, of course it changes. Of course it changes the twenty-eight oh five. But, but we agreed last week that twenty-eight oh five was the number we were gonna use publicly.
Well, that was number one, we thought.
Ah, I'm sorry, but that's what we agreed on. That's what we agreed on. I was forced to vote on that. I was forced to vote on.
The numbers that the accountant was given as confirmed bids.
I didn't get, the accountant did his own investigation.
Oh boy, I'm not gonna keep arguing this. If you wanna vote, vote.
Thanks.
I've raised my issue, okay? Thank you.
Just to clarify a question. The user fees or the connection fees are not included in the referendum amount?
No, well, I don't know.
Well, we have to wait till, we have to wait till the next item. But, yes, the, the, the assess, tho- those connection fees. Uh, Mike Patello has added money either way. Um, even our bottom counsel said, it doesn't have to be included in the, in the referendum amount, but if you wanna be saved, include it.
Here's, um, just cuz you're saying, as, as it's explained, that they're being paid as user fees over time. So it's really not part of the referendum, the referendum's construction predominantly.
Predominantly construction plus, plus, uh, other, other scenario. I mean, he's, they've added quite a bit of money to, 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 uh, this, this. We, we will be in our referendum. He said, don't, Mike, Mike believes that whether we include them in user fees or assessment. It doesn't matter, it doesn't change his figures. So I would imagine that he's already. Accounted for those as being included in, in either the assessment or not.
I, I just wanna know how you're gonna pay that bill in the first year or two if you're not included in the assessment. And only ten percent of the Soundview community hooks up, and you're calling it a user fee, you can't charge them a user fee if they're not hooked up, right?
I, I can, we can still, we can still charge users. Who's gonna pay for the infrastructure? Who, who, who's going to pay? No, no, wait, who's going to pay for the bill? That, that goes to, uh, uh, that comes from New London on, on a quarterly basis?
That's what I'm saying, exactly. If it's part of the construction, part of the EDU, part of the assessment, then everyone pays toward that bill. The con- contractual fees. If it's not, who is gonna pay it? Because you can't charge it if you call it a user fee, you can't charge it to an empty lot, you can't charge it to my house if my house isn't connected. If I'm not a user, where will you get the money for the first quarter, second quarter, and the year end? In the first one or two, three, four years, you won't have the money unless you include the connection fees in the betterment fee and the assessment.
Alright, that makes sense.
Right.
Go ahead, Dimitri.
All right. There is also, you'll be connection fees to every house. That homeowner will pay. Correct. Now we have New London connection, we have East Line connection. And homeowner connection, his house to the soup. Which also money. Will be by user, right?
That'll be in next month's agenda.
Well, we have to predict it was what's going to happen. I think Mary has a point. I think at this point, we have to consider.
And I I'd like to clarify, uh, the accountant's report. That we're using as the basis of our numbers, uh, that included construction, engineering, design. It included um, short-term financing fees. It included uh, connections in New London and East Line. And then additionally.
User fees. End user fees.
And and user fees. What it did not include is the new bid from, well, it's not really a bid. It's a negotiated number between Deep and Baltasar uh, for the shared. Forced Main and uh, Biocide Station. Because uh, Raymaker has dropped out. And they have come up with a. An agreement with Baltasar to do it for twelve thousand dollars, I mean, twelve million dollars. Uh, as opposed to nine point five or whatever Raymakers was. So that's not reflected in the accountant's fees. And uh, whatever other um, inflation costs will be paying for the pump station. Or for our internal from Colona. I understand we have some credits from Colona and there'll be some inflation, so whatever. That final number ends up being. But.
Jim, that final number right now is four hundred thousand less than the bid.
Yeah, but the 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 new shared number is is not part of uh.
Correct.
Not 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 part of the accountant's numbers, so it's going to go up. Not dramatically, but it will go up by two and a half million dollars spread out among the four parties.
The other thing that will come into play is if, uh, as I'm hearing, and Steve, you probably know more about this. The fifteen million is applied completely to the shared, which reduces our subsidy. From twenty, from twenty nine point seven of the, as we've been told right along, we would get of the fifteen million. It actually reduces the subsidy for Soundview by seven hundred and five thousand dollars, I believe.
No, it doesn't, Mary. If you do the math correctly, it if you do the math correctly, it saves us one point five million dollars.
And how do you figure that, Steve?
So if if it were twenty million, it's a little over twenty million, but let's say it's twenty million. There's a twenty five percent uh, C W F grant, which brings it down to fifteen million. And then the fifteen million pays that whole loan off. So then all we do is finance our internal infrastructure at eight point five five million. Or not, let's say nine point five five million at at seventy five percent, because we still have a twenty five percent grant. That brings us down to seven million and change. I was asking for eight point five five. We were, I was saying we were going to have to finance eight point five five million. So it's saving us, I mean, if you go through the numbers and not mess around with what it is now or whatever, uh, it's saving us one point five million dollars.
I I I'd have to go sit down and run the math myself to get that.
Yeah, that would be a good idea, because I own the math.
I have, and I I mean, just logically, we were at twenty nine point seven, so you said for this forgivable loan.
Yeah, so we owe nothing of that.
We're at twenty five percent, yeah.
No, 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 we own, basically, we would owe nothing for internal infrastructure. Nothing. We don't owe twen- we owe twenty nine percent of zero. I mean, I think it's going to be one point two million dollars or whatever, but plus the engineering.
Like, I'm not going to argue this. I'm just going to sit there and do the math.
Yeah, I did the numbers.
Yeah.
Well, Steve, from the last numbers I saw from Mike Patello and um, Deep. The shared was going to be twenty six million, basically for applying twenty five percent clean water funds. And fifteen million uh, forgivable loan. We still have a five million dollar shortfall in that. That will be divided among the Four Beach Association.
Which is one point about one point five, one point five or one point seven million. That's that's correct. However, however, the the deep has put six percent contingency on that. There there's a lot of, there's a lot of money in there that that. It, that's for referendum. That's not the contract value. The contract value, I think, is uh, twenty one million and then there's another two million in in engineering fees that have to be split. So it's twenty three million. Like I said, it's not, it's not twenty million, but I guess my my point was that. We make out if they pay off the shared infrastructure. We, the more they pay on the shared infrastructure, the better the town of O-line is as far as not expending money. Now, if you want to, if you if you want to allocate the way they did, my figure showed that it was eight point five five million that we would have to finance. And if you got rid of all of that and had our figure at nine point something million, less twenty five percent, it came down to seven point. Two million, seven point one, we saved about a million and a half dollars. It was a better deal for us. That's why I wouldn't fight it. If that's how they they want to finance that, that's better for us. But, you know, I I I've done the numbers, um. I don't believe I've been wrong in any of my calculations uh, in my presentations. I'm pretty confident in that number also. So if they do do that, we're better off, um, I I believe. But um. I, I'm still confused on how they're going to actually fund that. And I think the deep is is a little confused on how they're going to fund it. But if they do fund it, it's apparent to me now that if they fund it at all, there's still going to be. At least two million dollars or two and a half million dollars outstanding of which we would owe twenty nine point seven percent.
So we wouldn't be, in essence, getting twenty nine point seven of the grant, but we'd still be responsible for twenty nine point seven. Interesting.
We would. Depending on how they finance it, if they finance, they put the fif- all the fifteen million. To in uh, shared infrastructure, we would be responsible for twenty nine point seven percent of the balance remaining. After C W F funding and fifteen million dollar grant. But. Let's go back to uh, connection fees, whether we want them as user fees or assessment costs. I think Mary brings up a good point that. You know, you start billing people immediately on assessment costs, whereas if you're a user fee, uh, you may not be able to bill them the first year or two. So.
That could put us in a bit of a jam, right? And I know mathematicians.
I don't, I I think there's going to be a user fee to everyone, whether they hook up or not. But that's. My opinion. There's other costs. I mean, you you're using the pump station. Um, am I only going to bill? So so the pump station is being used and no- number one, I believe in our ordinance, you have to hook up. I I mean, I believe somewhere, we've we've already said you have to hook up within a year, but uh, unless you get permission not to. But. Even if that weren't the case, there's, there is a certain set cost that I don't think. Like if two people hook up and our bill is two hundred thousand dollars, are are we, are we going to expect? Two people to carry two hundred thousand dollars? I I don't, I don't think that's the case. Um, I think that there there is, there's, we we owe twenty nine percent of the electrical bill on the pump station. We owe twenty nine percent of rent. We owe twenty nine percent of all of that stuff for two years. Um, there will be a user fee regardless of whether you're hooked up or not. Then there'll be a fee of two people in Soundview in area B. Um, whether they hook up or not.
I don't think you can do that one, okay?
Okay, so maybe we should put it right in the assessment, so everyone pays it right off the bat. I think you're, I think you're right there, Mary. I think that's a good idea.
What's it doing? Is it currently in the assessment?
We apparently we've never decided where that, where that's going to go. That's why I'd like to vote.
What was that motion?
Yeah, exactly. Go back to the motion. Yeah, so, all right, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back. So so the motion, the motion is is to include. Uh, New London and East Line connection fees into our user fee. Um. Is there any more discussion? Right, uh, not hearing any, I'd like to call the motion. So. Now, if you vote yes, it means that it's going to be included in user fee. If you vote no, we'll have to have another motion to include it in assessment cost. Um, all in favor of of it being in user fees?
No.
Yay.
I hear yay. Brad? Anyone else? All right, um, so the motion of all, all, all not in favor, say. Nay?
Of course, nay.
All right, so the motion fails eight to one. With Brad being the uh, the center. Um, can we entertain another vote or another motion to to include? East, New London, East Line uh, as as part of the assessment cost. Dimitri made the motion, seconded by. Rob, uh, do we need further discussion on this motion?
I think you need to word it so that it says the connection fees. I I don't think your motion says that.
Uh, the motion. Uh, being considered is to have New London, East Line connection fees included as part of the assessment cost. Do we need more discussion on this? Not hearing any, uh, I'd like to call a motion.
Can I say something? Can I say something?
You can't, you can't, you cannot say anything.
I'm getting tired of not saying nothing. I mean, you're going to say another assessment.
You cannot say anything.
How about put, put a dollar amount on it?
How how about, how about not interrupting the meeting? How's that? Uh.
Show respect.
Uh. All in favor of including New London, East Line connection fees as part of the assessment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Brad, are you opposed or or for?
I'm sorry, I'm for. Apologize, sir.
Or, okay, uh. All right, so so the motion passes unanimously. So the the New London and East Line connection fees will be part of uh, the assessment cost. All right, so uh. As Mary brought up, uh, Jim brought up, I knew um. There've been some uh, contractors that have not extended their bids any further than they have. Uh, the deep has has worked out funding or or contract values with Baltasar. Um. Uh, let's see, uh. And Mike Patello has come up with these numbers, which was sent to me today at eight twenty one A M. Uh. I would like to agree, he goes, based on Deep's latest numbers, which I provided to you last Friday. The total project cost would be nineteen million, three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. Uh, minus, uh, well, forget about the minus part because uh, we we have to include the total project cost. So. He's suggesting, or he's he's requesting that. Uh, look, he's he's actually going to use nineteen million, three hundred and twenty one dollars, uh, three hundred and twenty one dollars. Uh, three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars as as the amount that we go out to referendum. Um. An update on a referendum, uh. We won't have a bidder as of the end of this year. And so the town has found uh, a way of having a referendum. Uh, this this year, uh, tentatively December sixteenth. Um. They're going to have a a meeting, a special meeting right before the board of finance. I think uh, at that meeting, they're going to. Uh, they're going to recommend going out to referendum. I think the board of finance will do the same. And this will be the number that's placed in the referendum notice and will be voted on. Um. It's, there's a lot of contingency money in there. Uh, there's uh, almost two minutes, ten percent. Uh, there's well, eleven percent, there's five percent, six percent, so uh. So I believe that, uh, you know, nineteen nineteen, nineteen million, three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and sixty five. Dollars is is certainly. Uh. The number that our bottom council feels comfortable with, uh, in which we will not uh, go above that number. In our projected cost. So I'd like a motion uh. To. Increase the referendum. Request uh, or amount to nineteen million, three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and sixty five dollars. That motion. Rob McCarthy made the motion a second.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, ready seconds. Uh, is there any discussion?
I just have one question, just one question, please. So excluded from that nineteen, three, twenty one is the user fees. Any other thing besides the connection fee from the street to the uh, property? Is there any other thing excluded from that nineteen million, three, twenty one?
There is, there is nothing excluded from this number. In which. Affects the, the project cost of O-line.
So, uh, so to be more specific, the user fees, the connection fees from the house to the street are not included. Is there anything else not included? That you can think of? Anything else?
I, wh- what I'm saying is all of the costs associated with the O-line W P C A. Installing its internal infrastructure and shared infrastructure as. Shown on the respective plans is included in this number as well as. All the engineering, design, contingency and hookup, uh, and. And tie-in fees to New London and East Line.
Okay, thank you. So all the bookkeeping, auditing over the years, everything's been factored into that nineteen million, three, twenty one?
Sure.
Steve, did he include short-term financing in that?
Uh, Mike did include short-term financing. I think it was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, something like that.
Steve, you mentioned eleven percent contingency. I read six percent. They don't add the the other five percent that you had before.
Right, so it's.
On Mike's letter.
It's six percent contingency for the shared infrastructure and five percent contingency for the internal infrastructure. Since I'm combining both projects to equal nineteen million, three hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and sixty five. That would combine both uh, percentages to eleven percent.
Okay.
Well.
No?
No, because the six percent only applies to one part of it and the five percent applies to a different.
It's five and a half. About five and a half percent.
But it's not eleven percent. It's not.
I'm sorry. It's six, it's six, it's six percent of the share and five percent for ours.
Right, but not eleven percent.
Correct, it's not eleven percent. Yep.
Thank you.
Is there any other? Uh, discussion? Not hearing any, uh, I'll I'll call this motion. Uh, all in favor to increase the referendum amount to nineteen million, three hundred and twenty. Uh all in favor to increase the referendum amount to nineteen million, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars? Uh please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh motion passes six to three. Uh Brian, uh Mary and Dennis are the uh are the uh opposition vote, no vote? That ends that, um the last item uh is correspondence. Just go over my chairman's letter. Uh I hinted my resignation effective December thirty-first of this year. I believe I've accomplished uh everything that I've set out to do, or I will have by December thirty-first. And I have other things I'd like to pursue in my uh personal life. But uh it's been a privilege to serve the town and I thank everyone for your patience. May I have a motion to adjourn?
No public comments?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Well, there is no public comment on here, um but I'm not, not necessarily. I don't have to have public comment.
Really, you should, you should.
I don't have to have public comment. However, however, if I could have a motion to amend the uh uh second, second, okay, we can have public comment. All, all in favor? All opposed? Alright, you can have public comment. Um who out there would like to make a public comment?
I would, um this is Bill Reynolds from Gorton Ave Extension, Area B. I really have questions and I don't understand really what that whole exhibit E is. Twenty-five years ago, I bought a house in Old Line, not in Old Lime Shores, not in Old Colony, not in Miami Beach, a town of Old Line. So to all of a sudden have Frank Noe decide that he's going to have my house as part of the sewer, his sewer project is infuriating. I don't know what that means if, for some reason, the referendum fails and Old Colony then says that they're gonna do it themselves with Old Lime Shores. Does that mean I'll be one of the few town, first town person to be part of a sewer project? There's just too many questions with that um whole exhibit E that, and same with the EDU. So now I'm gonna have an EDU for Old Colony and possibly another one for Soundview. There's way too many questions. It sounds like Area B once again is getting the I don't know, the worst-case scenario here. The reason Area B, the reason Area B got brought into this umpteen years ago was because Hawksnest backed out and they needed more revenue. Now that there's a chance Miami, there's a chance the town, Frank Noe's looking for more revenue, so he's just grabbing our house and you're allowing that to happen or potentially to happen, infuriating.
Alright, so that's not, that's not the case. I, I'll have to respond to this because I think you've misinterpreted everything. Um that's not the case. Uh Frank wants to charge a tie-in fee for us to use his pipe that he's putting in already. If we don't hook up, then there is no cost to you or anyone else. If we don't have a system, we can't get your flow into his pipe. So number one, we would have to do the project ourselves in order for that to occur. Number two, I feel it's a project cost that would be borne by uh borne by all of uh the people in Soundview Area B, not one particular person or nine separate individuals. It's a project cost. It saves us money. So I don't, I don't find it un, un, unreasonable to oh, charge the rest of the people in, in the construction area uh the, the amount of the tie-in fee because we're saving people two hundred thousand dollars by not putting in grinder pumps. So it's not real, it looks like a charge, but if you go through the numbers and Jim has asked for the, for the uh for the fees on the grinder pumps, I think the number was two hundred and seventy thousand uh estimate at the time, but I'm not sure. Um but it's saving the whole, it's saving all of Soundview and Area B money by tying into uh Old Colony. Um you are not considered part of Old Colony, you're still considered part of uh Soundview Area B, O-line WPCA. You would get a bill from us, you would uh you, you wouldn't even know you're tied in to uh that man, all that is gonna go to. So
Can I just ask quick? So what you're saying is if I, if we tie into Old Colony, we wouldn't need a grinder pump?
Correct. That was the whole, that was the whole reasoning behind doing that.
And it's, and it's, and it's Soundview for some reason backs out, falls apart, and Old Colony does go through. The Area B is, all of the houses and nine houses that you keep bringing up are no longer part of Old Colony's project.
They, they're never part of Old Colony's project. You, you would be part of our project and our responsibility forever until, unless something dramatically changes. What, what, wouldn't happen is, we wouldn't be tying into Old Colony. Um it's, it's invisible to you. We're laying a pipe down one fifty-six to pick your, your flow up along with other Area B instead of
No, Steve, Steve, nothing is invisible to me. I see everything here when I open the mailbox and get a bill.
Okay. You wouldn't be being billed any differently than anyone else in Soundview or Area B.
And I wouldn't need a grinder pump.
And you would not need a grinder pump?
And you don't want a grinder pump?
You don't want, and you don't want, but that, that, that's, that was, that was the uh impetus, the whole system will be grinder pump free.
But that, I don't understand what changed why, why like the Old Colony Minutes are now bringing up our property as part of their project. It's always been a gravity-fed system, so if this road
So, uh all I can say is, I'm gonna have, they do not want you to be part of Old Colony. Jim can attest to that. We've been in meetings where Frank Noe says, I don't want any, I don't want them in part of my project, I don't want, I don't want, they're your responsibility. So I don't know why Old Colony is saying that, but that's or, or or what, but it's not something that, that Frank Noe has considered. Is that correct, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, one of the issues I raised is, well, why not, if, if you wanna charge a connection fee, why not just move these houses into Old Colony? And take it off Soundview, so these houses aren't double-charged essentially. Uh he wanted no part of that. Uh he wanted no part of uh operations and maintenance fees going to Colony instead of Soundview. And uh you know, all of those were non-starters with him and a non-starter with me was to charge a full EDU for these houses. Um so I was waiting to see what the, what the outcome would be. I think a total hit of fifty thousand. Um I mean, I do question why it came up at the very last minute. We've been in these talks now for months. And going over every period, comma, semicolon, and all of a sudden, bang, we get this. So I'm, I'm annoyed as well. You know, the, the argument that this gets us out of grinder pumps, yes, I mean, yeah, so I do wanna see those numbers. You know, and I, we definitely need to, to stop these additions uh to, to Soundview's bill, but um you, you know, it's, it's, it's not something that's going to be uh assessed specifically to houses in Area B. Uh it's going, that, this one-time fifty-three thousand dollar hit, if this is the way it ends up. Uh and again, I'm not giving an opinion on this yet because I haven't seen it. Uh and so we'll still have to vote on this with the Board of Selectmen, but that fifty-three thousand will be a portion among all of the Soundview area homes. So they split up by two hundred and seventy.
So the street that Bill's talking about has three houses on it. Each of those houses have like I know, one to three bedrooms. They're very small houses. Their lots are point-two-seven, point-two-nine, and point-four-four. Each of those three houses could certainly support a conventional septic system and they're more, I mean, they're so far away from the shore, it's laughable to think that they would have any impact on Long Island sun. So really, push came to shove, we could grant an exception um for those particular homes if it becomes a, a sticking point to um to exempt them from the project. If it's not for, a cost affordable for those particular properties, it would require grinder pumps. You know, th- those, actually the nine of them, there's only one that has a compromised lot. And uh the rest really support conventional septic systems. So it's a consideration. It's another option, I think.
Yeah, and as is redesigning the system so it flows into Soundview. Excuse me.
You know, I'm just gonna bring it up one more time. Fifty-three thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars for some of these homes. You're talking a quarter, maybe more, the value of my home. You know.
But we're not talking fifty-three thousand dollars though, so.
Well, what are you talking? How much is gonna cost me over twenty years, Steve?
Twenty, twenty-eight oh-five times twenty at the worst, so forty, twenty-eight, fifty-six thousand dollars. Over, over twenty years, over, and that's, that's, that stays the same. So what's twenty-eight hundred dollars gonna be worth in twenty years?
It's probably, it's probably, Steve, if I can afford to live in this house anymore. I was planning on dying in this home. You make it sound like it's nothing to you. It's freaking huge to me. It's huge to a lot of people. The only people that keep standing up are the people that have skin in the game.
I have, I have no skin in this game.
Easy for you to laugh at people talking and people getting upset. It's because we're gonna lose our home, Steve.
I, I, I have spoken to town leadership about this problem. And if town leadership wants to help people out, they're certainly more than welcome to do it. I'm sure the taxpayers of O-line would not care if, if someone is means-tested and can prove they can't afford it and are going to lose a house they live in year-round and have been in for years, I'm sure they can find some way of relieving that responsibility. But I'm not that person.
I will say that on, on his particular street, the three houses range from two hundred and fifty-nine thousand to three sixty-nine thousand as their new appraised values. So, charging fifty-six thousand, yes, that's quite a big bill.
It's, it's not, it's not fifty-six thousand dollars. I mean, uh you, you, listen.
You just gave the number fifty-six thousand.
Over twenty years, finest at two percent. That's user fees and that's everything else.
Each homeowner is paying for it. Each sound, each town homeowner will be paying a portion of that fifty-three thousand. That's, that's divided by two seventy.
Well, I know that, but he's, 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 he's talking about the full, he's, he's talking about the amount of money he will spend over twenty years will be equal to fifty-six thousand dollars. So, okay, you're right, and that's why I said, but, but what is two, twenty-eight hundred dollars gonna be worth in twenty years?
I'll, I'll probably be dead, Steve. Still not talking about getting a water bill. I have my well, my well's three hundred feet deep, it's Poland Springs water. Gonna make me pay to fill that in, tie into Connecticut water. I have a water bill now.
No, that's not what we would do. We would install a meter on your well. That's, that's what we've agreed to as a WPCA. Anyone that's not tied into uh uh Connecticut water and won't tie into Connecticut water obviously must have a well and we will install a meter at no expense to the homeowner so that we can meter your water usage.
And you're gonna have to sleeve the pipe? Because it's too close to the street?
No, we don't have to s- uh, we don't have to sleeve any pipe.
I thought that was the whole reason for abandoning wells because the zoning says it's gotta be so, or not zoning, but has to be so many
Um the health, the health department, but now the health department has agreed that containing the joint is sufficient enough. So there's a, there's no double-wall pipe down there anymore. It's a basically a rubber boot that goes over the bell end and the spigot end and it's tightened to, to, to stop that. But we're getting, we're getting, we're done with public comment. You've had two minutes. I appreciate
And I appreciate it and I'd also like to really thank Jim and Mary and Dennis for really the only three that I see that are standing up and trying to help the people of Soundview. I really, all along, they've stuck with it and they deserve credit.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, is there any other comment? If you're, if you wanna make a comment, make sure you go mute yourself.
Steve, I don't know, I'm not sure if you muted me or not.
I haven't muted you. Go ahead, Bill.
Alright, well, before I was cut off and I, I apologized because you, you asked open for questions, so that's why I said something. But you know, Mary brought the, the, the point there of i- if people don't tie into the sewers, right, y- you still see at the end of the, end of the quarter that you have to pay to either Eastline or Waterford. And, and, and it's, it's a great point because there's a lot of people there who have good septic systems who are not gonna tie into the sewers if they don't have to. Why spend the extra ten or fifteen thousand dollars due to tie-in from the, the lateral to, 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 to the to, to your house if you don't have to. So it was a good point. So my, 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 my question to you before you guys voted was you agreed to an assessment on that. And my only question to you was is what's that assessment gonna be?
It's going to be part of the total assessed value. And the total assessed value is gonna be the total cost of the project, which now will include about nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars of tying fees and it will be divided in by two hundred and seventy to figure out what the cost per EDU is and then it will be billed out as the assessment.
Well, then, then I, I think you should add that to the EDU since it's gonna be part of that same process. So your twenty-eight hundred dollar EDU now goes to thirty-one hundred dollars.
No, it doesn't. Because it wasn't, it, it, no, because that figure was already included in the twenty-eight oh-five, just in a different area.
Well, well, you, you try to confuse all the people.
So, so Bill, 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 let me put it this way. Let me put it this way. It was figured in the user fees. I'm gonna take it out of the user fees and put it into the assessment. I'm gonna take whatever the cost is and put it into the assessment and remove it from the user fee. The net result is zero.
No, the, the net, net result is, you still haven't given me a number. The net result is, i- i- if you have user fees, user fees are only done if you use that, that facility to get rid of your, your, your gray water. But if you're not using that, right, so you're telling me now, and you're telling everybody else, that everybody every, everybody who had a, a potential user fee now has an assessment, right? And that assessment now should go into either a tax or part of the EDU.
E- every, everyone always had user fees and an assessment of at least one EDU. No one's below one EDU in our system.
You're confusing it again. The EDU is just what it costs you to bring the main sewer line and all, all your infrastructure down the road.
No, an EDU, an EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit. No, no, an EDU, an EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit. We have two-hundred-and-seventy EDUs in our system. The total cost divided by two-seventy will give you a prior EDU value. That's the accounting added, the accounting added total.
That actually will give me a total EDU value, but anyways, but that still doesn't answer the question. I originally answered, I, I asked, was a, a user fee is not gonna be charged now, you guys didn't vote for that.
No, that's wrong. We're still gonna charge user fees, Bill. There will always be user fees. It's, it's just that we've taken some of those user fees and put them in the assessment. I, I don't, I can't, I, I think we're done here.
I hope you hear what you're saying here because what you're saying makes no sense at all.
I do hear what I'm saying and I think it makes plenty of sense, but we have a disagreement that I don't think can be. Uh, you, are you done with your comment? Because I'm done responding to it for sure.
Bill, maybe I can clarify a, a little bit for Bill.
That's okay, Mary, you're not recognized. Uh, Mike, do you have, Mike, do you have a, do you?
I'll recognize Mary as part of my conversation.
No, you can't recognize Mary as part of public comment. Mike, Riggio, please.
No, uh, yeah, hi, Steve. I, I had just a couple of things, um. I, I was, uh, part, I, I live in Old Lime Shores. And they had a meeting tonight on the sewer project as well. And they are ready to award, uh, their contract for the work that's to be done in Old Lime Shores. The thing that's holding them up now is the shared cost agreement. So they're uncertain as to whether the town is going to be participate in the shared cost agreement. If the town doesn't participate, it somewhat puts their project into jeopardy. So, the, the thing now is that they, their contractor's looking for a commitment. Their board will make a commitment until they understand where the town is going. So you mentioned before that, that a special meeting will be held on December the sixteenth.
No, no.
Following.
My, that, that, December sixteenth, December sixteenth would be, would be the referendum date. If, if they go, if they go forward, December sixteenth is a tentative referendum date. Those other meetings would be held in, in, in November to authorize the referendum.
Okay, so that's good. So that, uh, the referendum will be out on, in December sixteenth. I think that, that will give them enough time. And with a, with the contingency they have with their contractor.
Yes.
But, so that was it. I, but I'd like to just, I'd like to thank you for, uh, your resigning, but. You had a difficult job there for a long time. Thanks for that work.
Thank you, Mike.
Bye-bye.
Uh, I don't see any other, uh, John Flood? You're muted. Do you have any comments? Not hearing any, um, have a motion, uh, for adjournment?
Steve, let me just, before we do that, one quick thing, just informationally, because I attended a meeting with, with, uh. Martha Schumaker on this back in, uh, early part of the month. The dates that were thrown out that are pertinent to the referendum are the. Board of Finance, Board of Selectment meetings on November twenty-fourth, it'll be next week, right? Uh, informational, uh, mailing would occur December third. The notice of the town meeting would be published. December ninth, it'd be a town meeting. And the referendum would be held on December sixteenth. Those are the dates.
Thank you very much, Mary. Second. Brian's second, most, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.